At this time, I'll call the October 18th, 2021 York County Council meeting to order the Honorable Roddy, William Bump Roddy will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
You know, keep the company weak, mother of man. All right, let us pray. Dear Father, we come to you with humble hearts, humble minds.
We ask that you continue to watch over us, lead us and guide us that we make the right and proper decisions. We ask that you continue to bless our service men and women that provide our protections and our freedoms. Bless this chamber as we do the people's work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pleasantly just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kendry, I believe if we already do the oath of office, we're all completed. Okay. We do not have any appearances, and my understanding is there is no one here to speak on public forum. Do we have a motion to, motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. We move to our first public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and provide third reading to an ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the York-Chesapeake industrial park between Chester County, South Carolina, and York County, South Carolina, so as to enlarge the park pursuant to the provisions herein and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Move here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here we go. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move close.
Motion and a second to close, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to old business rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 21-16, tax map number 651-0000-084, 651-0000-101, 651-0000-107, and 651-0000-121, to rezone from RD1 to BD3 in District 1.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd just like to say real quick, I think, again, this is a great opportunity for an area in need of business opportunities, and I think this lends directly into what we're looking for. So, again, definitely, definitely for this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 21-17, 553-00-00-092, to rezone from RUD1 to BD1, 4.886 acres in District 2.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 21-18, tax map number 694-0000038, to rezone from UD to RC1, 10.35 acres in District 5.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to new business. Counsel to discuss and direct staff regarding prospective organizational structure of the Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I make a motion to keep Visit York County under the county umbrella by amending the ordinance to give municipalities who contribute funds to Visit York County a seat on the board and to allocate all currently unallocated state and local ATACS funds for this current year to Visit York County. And all ATACS collected in future years allocated to Visit York County as well.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Winkler?
Since I made it all, that last sentence, I'm pretty sure I can't put in there, so we'll probably have to remove that portion of it, but, because we're binding future budgets and council members, so I will amend the motion to say, current, all current year unallocated ATACS be allocated to the CVB for this budget year, which it said, I'll just drop, I'll drop off the last sentence for future allocations.
Do we need to second? Yeah, so, do we know at this point how much ATACS we're looking at?
Before we move on, Mr. Guffey, do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Roddy.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, the question I have is, do we know what we're looking at for ATACS with additional, what we're already currently giving, how much more that will be?
The only portion of the local and state that was allocated is $22,500. That's the amount that you would be voting on in the second item in new business.
Twenty-two thou, or forty?
Forty.
Forty-two thousand.
Part of that forty thousand already had twenty thousand. Forty-two thousand, five hundred, already had twenty thousand. So, it's an additional twenty-two thousand.
But we have not voted on that yet.
Correct, correct. So, you're in essence, you're...
Voting half on one item.
You're doing the next one already right now, but that's fine.
Okay, so, we're talking forty-two thousand in total in regards?
Yes, yes.
Above what's currently even?
Above what's currently going to?
No, sir. In the budget, y'all allocated the, if you look down at number two in your agenda, you'll see nineteen thousand five hundred, bottom, or top of page 11. What is, the committee recommended was another twenty thousand to the CVB, okay? So, that nineteen and the twenty thousand was thirty-nine thousand five hundred. There's another twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty that has not been allocated at this point in time. Y'all could always change that at this point, and that's, I think, what you're going to do in the, if you accept this motion, you're in essence already doing number two, I think, and I'll defer to Mr. Kendry on that. I think you still go through a number two, but at that point, it will be unnecessary.
It'd be mooted at that point.
And the motion was for all unallocated, unallocated state and local?
Correct, the locals have all been allocated.
But, if you're, we're allocating additional funds in the next item, so if we're allocating all unallocated funds, then we're allocating all of these funds, and number two becomes moot, correct? Because technically, these funds are unallocated until...
Yes, yes, sir.
So, if the motion is to allocate on all unallocated funds, then we're, we're actually allocating three hundred and eight thousand.
Or am I?
No.
No, the three oh eight was requested.
You're looking at two thousand?
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong column, yeah. But still, we would be allocating all of the funds, correct, and not, because, back, I'm sorry, we're moving a little fast. Back me up again if I misunderstood.
Okay, um, as of this point in time, during the budget process, y'all allocated out of the state thirty-nine thousand, and I'm going to get to the nineteen-five for the thirty percent and the twenty thousand, thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the CVB is what you allocated towards the CVB during your budget process. Y'all are required every year to go through, you have an accommodation tax committee that's required by state law, which you get, they make a recommendation. Y'all don't have to follow, I think, every year, the last three, four years, y'all have changed that. So, in essence, right now, what Mr. Winkler's motion would do would be to take the money for the Arts Council, the museum, Old English District, the NAACP, and the Fort Mill Historic Museum, those funds, and allocate that now to the CVB, which I think, and I'll defer to Mr. Kendry on how you handle the next item, but in essence, that's what you're doing.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we start, finish the discussion on the motion that relates to the CVB organizational structure? If we have council, like, adopt that, let's have a discussion about that, that part of it, aside from the funding, even though that's part of the motion. Can we have comments from that as to what, where council is?
I think they're, I think they're necessarily intertwined.
If, Ms. Cox, if Mr. Winkler took the funding portion out of his motion, and you just voted on the restructuring organization, then did number two...
It makes it cleaner.
And adjusted that, I think it would be cleaner. But I'll defer to Mr. Kendry on what he thinks is the best way to handle that.
I'm happy with that suggestion.
Currently, we have a, currently, we have a motion on the table, so unless the person making the motion wants to, wants to amend it to eliminate that, then we need to move forward with a decision on that.
You're all right with amendment. You're the second. Okay, then, I'll amend my motion for now to remove the funding part of it, so it would just be to direct county management and county attorney, so to keep, motion to keep Visit York County under the county umbrella by amending the ordinance to give municipalities who contribute funds to Visit York County a seat on the board, and we'll visit the allocation in the next motion.
Mr. Guffey, you?
This is essentially option two.
Correct, yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have an amended motion and a second on the organizational structure. Any other discussion as to that portion?
As to the amendment?
This is the motion now.
Okay.
This is the amended motion.
Well, we have folks from the CVB here, including Billy, if we don't mind, I'd like to hear their thoughts on it.
Typically, when we've already got a motion and a second, we move forward. I don't have a problem if folks have specific questions. Mr. Roddy?
Yes, my, my specific question was, I'd like to know what Billy wants out of this. Does he want to remain with York County, or does he want to move to the city of Rock Hill? Because I don't want to be putting him in a position that, if his thought process was to go, and we're saying to stay, I'd like to hear from him. You know, what does he want to do? What does he think's best for this situation? Because we've heard, I've heard from several callers over the weekend about things that we can do, and I still think we haven't answered the question of going forward of a minimum set funding for the CVB annually. Because if we're going to just pick and choose now, what about next year? What about the following year? And I think it would, it would serve us and Billy well for him to know what's kind of a baseline of funding he can expect from us going forward, so he knows what kind of obstacles he'll be up against trying to make his budget work going forward. So, I think those, if we could, at least, I mean, because this is a critical decision asked for in an entire organization, I hate for us to make that decision without at least, you know, hearing his thoughts on, how does this work if he remains with us? But those would, those would be my questions.
I wholeheartedly agree with everything Councilman Roddy just said. I think we're, we're moving awfully quick here and pushing through a motion real fast without hearing from the people here that are here to discuss it, and I would hope that they would have an opportunity to do that prior to any motions that would exclude or preclude them from giving us their opinion, when it's the CVB that's actually affected by this vote.
Can I make a motion, we suspend the rules and hear from the director?
If we can hear from council...
That would be the procedure. Okay. Well, we can hear from council, then I'll make the motion.
You want to suspend the rules to allow?
To hear from Billy, yes.
And, and are there any board members? Because I'm curious to also know where the board stands. I mean, you've got a board and you've got a director, so I'm, I don't know if the board members, I mean, I don't know if the board members are going to speak, I mean, I'd just like to know. I mean, we haven't been privy to what they're...
If we're going to open it up for public discussion, that's going to be made by motion, then I think anyone who's here who wants to speak on it would certainly be allowed to. I think it's a departure from it, so we may not get the full story, and, but, if you want to be, you've made the motion to suspend the rules to allow public comment.
Yeah, I'm second, I'll save it then.
All right.
Any other discussion on that issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Dunlap?
All right, so, would you like me to answer questions, or just, I'm prepared to do either one? Actually, I'm not prepared to do either one, but I can do either one.
Could you maybe perhaps provide generally your opinion on the motion that was made, and then if we have follow-up questions, we could ask those?
Well, I'll, I'll answer Councilman Loves' question first. You all should have received an email this week from our board chairperson that stated what our board's feeling about this is, and it all revolves around funding. I think Councilman Roddy hit the nail right on the head that, you know, what you did, what you're proposing to do tonight solves, well, doesn't really solve the problem now, but it definitely doesn't solve the problem going forward. Because additional twenty thousand dollars now, you know, is, is helpful, but the issue that we have is consistent funding going forward, because we are bidding on events '25, '26, and we need to know what our funding is going to be. From a staff's perspective, and I do not want to speak for the Board of Commissioners, from a staff's perspective, our preference is to merge with Rock Hill PRT, because it gives us stable funding on an annual basis. That was the sole reason that we even looked at that option. Because when I got here, and some of the council members here were not a part of this, but when I got here in 2018, we had a funding agreement with county council, and that funding agreement was a five-year funding agreement that said that council would give us a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year for five years with a maximum of 1.2 million dollars, and that was hospitality tax only. So, we went out and secured events based on that funding. I was not here six months, and council voted to abolish that funding agreement. So, we weren't even a year into the funding agreement when council changed their mind and decided to go in a different direction. So, all of that being said, that's, what you're proposing to do tonight is really just a Band-Aid. What helps us is what we do going forward, because this is, this organization cannot operate on a year-to-year basis, because the funding has to be in place for an extended period of time, because we can't, I'll give you a prime example, Major League Fishing was on Lake Wiley two weeks ago. Well, we secured that business three years ago with a fifty thousand dollar bid fee for them to come. Well, that fifty thousand dollars was in the three hundred thousand dollars that we lost in hospitality tax this year. So, we had to figure out where that fifty thousand dollars would come from to be able to make that event still happen. So, hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea of what our, what our year-to-year needs are, and that's why we talked about going to Rock Hill PRT, because those fees, those, those funds are guaranteed on an annual basis, as opposed to the way we've done business here. I'll be glad to answer any individual questions.
So, that funding would have helped the Lake Wiley fishing tournament?
Excuse me?
That same funding that you're talking about would have helped in the case of the Lake Wiley fishing tournament?
You're talking about the Major League Fishing?
Yeah, if you go to, under Rock Hill, the funding that you needed, would that have been provided?
Absolutely.
It would have been provided.
Yes. Because that's, that's one thing that, and there's been, there's been a lot of discussion about the situation with Rock Hill PRT. The agreement that we have in, just in discussions with Rock Hill PRT is, if we were to go under that umbrella, we would operate just like we do now, in that York County would get marketing services, York, Clover, Tigger K, Fort Mill, all of those municipalities would get marketing services as well. When we talk to all those municipalities, and they preliminarily agreed to participate with us pending the election, knowing that we will have different council members to present to, those, that process will stay the same. So, right now, York County provides seventy-seven thousand dollars in funding for this current fiscal year that we're in. York County's getting seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of marketing and promotional services from Visit York County. If we were to merge with Rock Hill PRT next year, York County provides that same seventy-seven thousand dollars, they'll get the same seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of marketing and promotional services from the organization. So, that will not change. I know that was a question that I've been asked several times.
What about the organizational name?
Don't know. Don't know. That will be, if we were to go with Rock Hill PRT, there would be, there would be a branding analysis done to see, and it's basically going to be, you know, who participates funding. If the entire county participates in funding, then it'll have to have some sort of regional name to it. But to be able to answer that question, I don't really know right now.
Billy, it sounds like you kind of just answered this question, and I asked this at the last meeting, but I didn't get a chance to ask you this directly. So, one of the reasons, there's been a lot of discussion about this, as you can imagine. One of the, the reasons for keeping the organization under the control of the county was to allow the CVB to continue to market and pursue events and bid on events to bring to unincorporated areas of the county, with the presumption being that if the CVB was under the Rock Hill umbrella, that it would no longer be concerned with bringing events into the unincorporated areas of the county. So, I want to ask you that directly, if that is true.
No, that is not true. Andy Clinton, who was our Vice President of Sales, his, one of his main responsibilities will be recruiting events into facilities outside of Rock Hill PRT facilities, because Rock Hill PRT already has people that are selling events into their facilities, so we're not going to duplicate that. We would be working to put events in other areas outside of Rock Hill PRT facilities.
So, and, as the one who's responsible for such things, which arrangement allows the CVB to have the most flexibility to pursue its job in bringing events and recruiting events into the entire county, including the unincorporated areas?
I think both do. It, it all boils down to funding. That's, I mean, that's really what it boils down to. Stable funding versus funding that, I mean, as, if, if you decide to do what you're discussing to do right now, that solves, you know, it helps us until July 1, but then we're right back here in July 1, doing the exact same thing that we've done for the last four years, or at least since I've been here.
What, what amount, or would, what would you define as consistent and adequate funding to?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a loaded question, because there is, there's a lot of, as you well know, this is a political football that we're playing with right now.
I'm trying to get beyond that. I'm trying to get, what's the best way to do the job?
And, and I would love to get past that, but in reality, we can't, because we're dealing with several what-ifs. We stay with the county, what does that do with our relationship with the city? We end up with the city, what does that do with our relationship with the county? There's a lot of variables there. You know, for us, you know, we have the potential, if we stayed with the county, we have the potential of, if our relationship with the city of Rock Hill does not continue, then we're, we lose another million dollars potentially. So, there's, there's, there's a lot of variables that go into this. This is, this is a, this is a critical decision for this organization. This organization lives and dies, potentially, with this decision that you're talking about tonight. And, and I'm not being overly dramatic.
I understand that, but, I understand that, you know, potentially lives and dies, which is why I'm trying to just elicit as much information as possible and figure out which, which arrangement allows the CVB the greatest probability of continuing to not only survive, but thrive?
Rock Hill PRT. And you're, you're getting my opinion. That might not necessarily be the opinion of some of our Board of Commissioners, but that's, that's my opinion.
Has there been a, I guess, what's the opinion of the majority? Has there been an official vote?
Yes.
What's the opinion of the majority of the board?
Rock Hill PRT.
Was it divided?
Yes.
But a vote was taken. I said, but a vote was taken.
By the board. What was the divided vote?
Eight to five.
And what were the reasons for the objectors?
Uh, there's some people that just don't want us to merge with Rock Hill PRT, because they feel like that, well, that board goes away, one thing, but they feel that it'll be Rock Hill PRT-focused, which it will be to some extent, but right now, we're Rock Hill PRT-focused. I mean, let's face it, they've got, they've got the, they've got all the facilities, you know, so, as we sit here today, we're, we're Rock Hill PRT-focused as a York County Commission. But that, that's part of it. That was part of the discussion in our meeting on, I mean, we had a special called meeting last week to discuss, after your last meeting, to discuss what was discussed there, and to reaffirm, because we had, we had a vote several months ago that voted to merge with Rock Hill PRT, and then we had another one last week.
So, how long is the, uh, Visit York County on the hook for the lease in downtown? Because that would change as well, correct?
It's a ten-year lease, and we've got seven years left on that lease.
And if you go to PRT, the county would just be left with that, correct?
Uh, discussion hasn't been had with, with the, with the, with the property owner, at least not from our perspective.
Kevin, or Michael, do you know the answer to that?
I think it's directly with the CVB, so we would need to have that discussion, if they're not planning on staying there, if Rock Hill isn't interested in assuming that lease, there is an assignment, assumption provision, but that's about it, not lease.
We had indicated previously that there's CVB funds on hand that would be, could be used to pay out a portion of that lease, depending on how, how long, if it was able to re-lease it and no longer an obligation on behalf to, in order to pay for that lease, but there are some funds on hand to do that, but it would come from the CVB's, I guess, operating funds.
Good.
So, Billy, a couple of quick questions. You mentioned as far as the seventy-seven thousand dollars, so each area, so Fort Mill, Tigger K, et cetera, would still get representation by the, the tourism group to, to the extent of the money that they've donated from their ATACS, or can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, when I got here, we had two municipalities that were providing funding along with the county, but we were providing services to everybody. So, we made a conscious effort to get a hundred percent participation from them, from the municipalities, which we have done. So, all five municipalities provide funding at different levels, from six thousand dollars annually to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And it's either hospitality tax or accommodations tax, depending on the municipality, but, so Clover gives us six thousand dollars, so we provide them six thousand dollars worth of marketing services throughout the year.
So, does that, in, from my education, does that include the impact fee that's currently being charged on some of the hotels? All right, explain the impact fee a little bit, too.
Okay, that is, the destination marketing fee is a two percent voluntary fee. It's an agreement between the organization, between Visit York County and the hotel. We provide them additional services over and above what we do for hotels that are not a part of the program. So, for instance, a, a given hotel in, well, and all the hotels are in Rock Hill or Fort Mill. So, we're collecting about, so I'll say, last, last fiscal year, we collected about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Rock Hill Hotels. That money goes right back into marketing and events for Rock Hill. Fort Mill, we were, we collected about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from their hotels. That money goes right back into Fort Mill to promote Fort Mill and their, and their events and their marketing. So, it's all about pouring that money back into those communities to benefit those hotels.
Right, so, so the impact fee, or... Right, so the impact fee, or I guess I'll just call it impact fee, that revenue based on where it's coming out will go back into the area that where you got it?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then you have your ATAX, which then that's another bucket, which again, that will then go into areas additionally. So explain to me though, the last question I have is that, helping the farmers in rural areas, you know, that type of outlying areas, how then would you approach supporting them based on the 77,000? And part of that 77,000 would then be used to support them? Or where, again, because that's a big concern, you know, that we need to be supporting the rural areas with their marketing, the farmers, et cetera. So explain to me how that's, would be supported.
That $77,000 predominantly goes to that. Predominantly goes to leisure marketing, and that's leisure travel marketing. That's ag and art, that's, you know, anything that draws people to Wendy Hill, to Brattonsville, to Blacks Peaches. We're doing a lot of heavy fall marketing right now when it comes to weekends. And if you've been out that way, you know, they're busting at the seams right now. But all of that marketing, because Carolins Boulevard, we collect destination marketing fee funds from some of those hotels on the Carolins Boulevard exits. So we use that money to pour into leisure marketing for Carolins and also the Fort Mill area. But those hotels are also benefiting from Rock Hill PRT facilities because when we're putting events in Rock Hill PRT facilities, they're staying in Fort Mill, they're staying at Carolins Boulevard. But the 77,000 that the county's giving us is predominantly leisure travel marketing on the western side of York County.
Okay, so they're still getting the support then they need regarding. Thank you.
My understanding from having some of the discussions with folks was, and first let me say this, I think that the way this is put on here and put on the agenda was a little bit premature. And I communicated that because I think there were some questions. My understanding was that one of the big sticking points with the board in their voting and in their consideration was the question as to whether or not it would put the existing employees in a bad place when it comes to ensuring them benefits. And what I understand is, and has that been answered? I mean, it seems to me if this were to stay under what council previously said, the majority to move forward with an option two. Mr. Kendry, is that considered, is that a problem? Or will the council be able to continue to alleviate that issue?
We don't view it as a problem for the employees. The literature from PIBA indicates that a person employed by an employer on a full-time basis and who receives compensation from a department, agency, board, commission, or institution of the state, of which we would be one, including clerical and Ministry of Employees of the General Assembly and judges in the state courts. So that, those employees of the commission, CBB, would be covered based on the status definition that PIBA employs for health and benefits coverage.
So what was previously an issue, I think of concern, is now not one for us to try and find a collaborative approach with, you know, the county maintaining. Does anybody have any other questions of Billy? I guess we'll make sure. Mr. Roddy, you have any other questions?
Well, I'm certainly glad I asked a question on where would you feel most comfortable at? And obviously, the board kind of sees Rock Hill being the ideal place for this to shake out on that side. I was kind of hoping we were at the point tonight in this meeting to discuss some financing options or options, how do we keep the structure under York County? We've put a lot of money into this branding over the years. We put a lot of money into building Visit York County. And for us to just have the gumption or the thought to just whisk it away to the city of Rock Hill only because we can't work out a much more better financing option? Because when we left last time, I thought we were looking at some ATAX, some H-TAX, some different other funding mechanisms that could possibly be worked out. And if we go through those progressions and we're unable to work it out, I think moving over to Rock Hill, even though the board voted that way, I think that should be the last option, considering what we poured into the CBB, where we stand right now in York County as a destination county, not just a destination city. And I understand Rock Hill has gotten the bulk of the advertising dollars, the advertising lion's share, because they simply have the facilities. I mean, you can't market an area too heavily when they don't have facilities. I think all of us up here recognizes Rock Hill's position in York County and how when Rock Hill does well, other areas kind of get that spillover effect when visitors do come. But if other areas want the monumental attractions, they're going to have to build them. If other areas want those advertising dollars to be poured into those areas, they're going to have to have the facilities. And I think that's a ways away. But how do we balance out being able to get the CBB enough funding to where we can keep them under our umbrella, still have that identity in the grand scheme of marketing? Because, simply because Rock Hill has the facilities, when we do market, it does say York County. And I think there's something to be had with keeping that name circulating. I would hate, I would hate to lose those talents to the city. Because we've made such a huge investment in branding, we had, what? We spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, almost a million dollars to some degree in this whole rebranding. And it wasn't just one year. I remember when, I think, I think when Lisa was head of the CBB, we dumped a lot of money into putting that name out there. And when Billy came, we still were putting money into branding this thing because we always wanted to take it to the next level for the entire county. And we all recognize Rock Hill's position in the whole tourism pot in York County. It's a huge footprint. If we didn't have Rock Hill driving this tourism base in York County, I don't know what the footprint looked like. We can't separate ourselves totally because Rock Hill has so much. They put tons of resources into their facilities and it's paying off for Rock Hill. It's really paying off. But I think there's a piece with Visit York County that still benefits us enough countywide for us to seriously consider what we would have to do to make it work. If we put our best offer on the table and if it still doesn't meet the CBB's funding needs, then I think at that point, we look to move the outfit to Rock Hill and whatever that entails. But I'm willing to crank out and beat out and hammer out any kind of options for us to keep the CBB under the York County umbrella.
Would you start by reinstating the 300,000 that we cut from the budget previously? Because if we're talking about financing options, I don't disagree with anything that you said. But our financing option that we're offering to Billy and the CBB is to increase their ATAX allocation by, what was it, $20,000?
That's not going to cut it.
That's nothing.
That's not going to cut it.
And we've taken, we've taken their funding from 750,000 to 300,000 to zero recently. This council placed so little value on your efforts that we decided it wasn't worth us funding. But now no one wants to give it up or give up your efforts. So, you know, it's like we want something for free when that just ain't going to cut it. And like, oh, well, let's give you 200, or let's give you 20,000.
So.
It just makes zero sense to me, so.
Does anyone, does anyone else, I mean, we're getting far afield from one of the questions. I mean, I think we're at the point now where we're asking Billy any questions. I want to make sure he can sit down when we're done asking questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't have any more direct questions for him, but I do have some comments as the one who made the motion, so.
Well, we'll circle back to that. Does anybody have any other questions of Mr. Dunlap before we get to the, make sure everybody's had a chance to ask the questions they want to ask?
I'll just ask, you know, what Mr. Roddy referenced, what is, what does that number, what's that number look like? What's an adequate amount of funding?
Well, I'll answer, I think Councilman Roddy had a great point. So since I've been here, council has reallocated 1.1 million dollars from our budget. When I got here, our budget was 1.2 million dollars. We've lost 1.1 million dollars of funding from county council. Our budget is now 1.9 million dollars. So we were 1.2, we lost 1.1, but we're now at 1.9. So we've been able to weather the storm, but it's all about funding. If we haven't lost the 1.1 million dollars, we're not having this discussion. Because we're rolling right along as Visit York County and we've got about a $3 million budget. We've got a great partnership with all the municipalities, but that's not what happened. So that's the situation. And look at it from our perspective. So we went from 900 to 600 to 300 in hospitality tax. We lost that 300. Because of COVID, we lost more accommodations tax. So, you know, look at it from our perspective of, you know, what, you know, what's coming next? You know, that's the situation we've been in over the last three years. And that's, that's what got us to today, is the loss in funding.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Does any other council members, I guess, any other members of the audience who were here who want to speak since we opened this up for public comment? Okay. And again, counsel, what we're trying to do is to get the questions asked of these folks, let them speak like we move forward. And I do want to say that the motion that's currently on the, let's just look.
My name's David Roberts, I'm past chair of Visit York County. I'm one of the five, one of the votes that is against going to the city of Rock Hill. I just tell you, I always have been and I will continue to be. The board did vote eight to five to go to the city of Rock Hill. And the two primary reasons, which Billy reiterated, were we were concerned about, could our staff continue to have their benefits and their jobs? I know one time, Councilman Roddy made a point that he was very proud, and as am I, that no county staff was laid off during COVID. Remember that comment? And I agree with that 100%. We've not laid anybody off, nor do we want to. So one of the driving things of this is our staff security and their job. I think, I call our staff high flyers. I mean, they do a fantastic job for this county, they're very dedicated. The main reason we're even standing here is because of your decisions. And your decision brings us here tonight. I'm grateful that y'all are having this discussion, that you're even interested in hopefully fixing this. When you asked Councilman Hamilton about the number, previously, you know, we kept getting cut, cut, cut. And that's how the DMF actually came to exist, is we had to make up your money some way, somehow. And so Billy came up with that plan. We implemented it, it's done very well. When you took the last 300, our discussion at our board meeting was, if we had that 300, I believe we'd be okay. Not like we want to be, but we would be okay. So when you ask, this is just my opinion, this is my thought from going through, I've been here, this is my seventh year on here. And so I've been through every bit of this. And the way I see this is, if we had a minimum of 300, I think we would be okay. Could we get more than that? Then of course, we would be, we would be much better off. My perspective is, and what I liked about how we've done is Visit York County. When I first came on here, all the money was from you guys and very little was from the municipalities except for Rock Hill. And there were some monies from another. So then we went and we got everyone involved. Because I think we are the umbrella for the county. And as Councilman Roddy said, yes, Rock Hill is the, has all the facilities, they have this and that. But, you know, they don't have Lake Wile or they don't have Bush and Vine. You know, there's other things, they don't have Brattonville, there's other things. If we, if we go to the city of Rock Hill, I'm concerned that we're looked at then as the city of Rock Hill taking care of the county. Where I think it should be the other way around. I think the county should take care of everyone. And that's where I hope you guys will, ladies and gentlemen, will hopefully come to that same conclusion. So with adequate funding, like Billy said, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. And I'm telling you, my personal opinion, he's spoken to you about what the board said, the board's decision, I've had a lot of discussion with all the board members. And it's primarily is worried about our staff. Of laying somebody off or then not being able to have their benefits, which the county attorney just clarified that point. But our board doesn't know that. And so like Councilman Roddy said, everyone needs to be informed so we can make a great, you know, the best decision for this county. So I don't, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Anybody have any questions?
Getting that clarification, does that change your decision?
I'm sorry?
Getting that clarification, does that change your decision? Would you vote to go?
My decision always was, I want to stay with the county. The only way I would change my vote to go to the city would be if the county attorney said our staff would lose their benefits. Then I would change my mind because of them. And that would be the only reason. But now that reason's been answered, no, I don't change my mind. I still want to stay with the county, but that's just me, I'm one of 15.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, quick question. How, just curious, how many staff members do you?
I said, what, seven? Seven.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other, anyone else who wants to speak?
Thank you for allowing me, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Brown Simpson. I'm Mrs. Cox's appointee to the CBB board. I think I know all of y'all. I want to speak to you real quick just about, from the perspective of a board member and what it's been like the last six, seven months. It's been tough. It's been tough to go through the process every month. It's been frustrating to go through the process of knowing that we had $300,000 taken from our budget. And we leave it to our staff to try to come up with creative ways to find and make this organization continue to work. I originally, and I talked to Ms. Cox about this, my biggest concern overall was our staff. I wanted to make sure that they were taken care of because we had some folks that were vested in the system, in the state system, and I didn't want them to lose their benefits. But in the long run, too, I changed my vote the other day. I voted with one of the nays to stay, I want to stay with the county. Because I think in the long run, Visit York County is the best thing we can do for this organization. Does it need to be reorganized with possibly some ideas that y'all have? Maybe yes, so, maybe we need to give the municipalities a seat on the board. But remember, right now, all of the board members, we're y'all's appointees. Y'all put us on the board to help make the best decisions we can for this organization. We need some consistent funding for this organization. So when we go through the budget process, we don't have to worry about, where we've had $300,000 cut, where's the next dime going to come from? If you want this to be a vibrant organization, give us some consistent funding in the long run for years that will make this the best organization we can have it be, that represents all of York County. I agree with Mr. Roberts, I agree with Mr. Dunlap. The city of Rock Hill's got the facilities from the tourism aspect, and I commend them for that. They've done a tremendous job with that. But also on the backside, too, when you look at a place like Bush and Vine, when you put, look at a place like Wendy Hill Orchard, other places around the county, they benefit every weekend, guys, from events, tournaments that happen at City of Rock Hill facilities. Look at hotels that benefit all around this county from facilities. So I would like to see us stay as Visit York County and stay with what we've got. But we've got to have some type of consistent funding in the long run that will help make this viable. If it's $300,000 this year, or it might be more in the future, we need that commitment from York County. We are representing the whole county when we serve and we provide these great amenities and great quality of life events for folks that come and visit. So please consider that. And think about your appointees that's been on the board and what we've had to deal with the last six, seven, eight months. It's been tough, I'm not going to lie to you. But you've got a committed group of people that have hung in there and tried to fight the good fight for you guys, that we represent you guys. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
If this council is not willing to commit to adequately funding, what's your position?
If not, then I think the best thing would be to go to the city of Rock Hill. I, you know, I say that reluctantly. I have a lot of friends that work for Rock Hill PRT. They'll be my friends after I say that. But I would like to see us stay under Visit York County.
Were you listening to the conversation earlier about the allocation of ATAX dollars and what those numbers would be? Would that proposal meet your definition of adequate funding?
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Currently, the motion on the table, as was amended per the request of two of our council members and all of us voted on this, is the, the only issue right now that we're, that we're voting on is whether or not to stay with the county and find a way to reorganize it such to fit the option two standard. So unless there's any other discussion.
I'd like to hear from staff. We haven't gotten a recommendation from staff on this.
Is there a recommendation from staff?
We made a recommendation initially that, based on the information we had, was to have the CB, CVB absorbed by the City of Rock Hill. That was the options of one, two, and three. That was option three, and that was what, what our recommendation was. For a lot of the reasons we've heard tonight, just so they had adequate funding to, to fund projects both inside the City of Rock Hill and in other, in the unincorporated areas of the county. However, I mean, it's, we view it as really a council decision at this point. Based on all, you know, if it's, if we make alterations to those options, that may change management's recommendation. But that was a recommendation we made, I guess, a month ago, two months ago. And I know there's been a lot of consideration and a lot of different options since that point. A lot of variations on those options.
Any other discussion?
I'd like a, I've held my tongue so far, so. And I'm probably going to ramble a little bit with this because I've got a lot of notes here where I'm trying to go with what I'm trying to say with all this. I haven't said a whole lot tonight because for the last four and a half years, I have screamed and hollered and jumped up and down about CVB. And I think it's very interesting tonight to all of a sudden hear council members who are concerned about where we're going to get funding, when I've said for four years that we were cutting the funding and we're going to cause the CVB to go somewhere else or to do something different. And we continued to cut their funding. I made the motion to, to leave the H tax in place. I've made the motion to pull three hundred thousand out of general funds to keep them whole. And every time I've made a motion to try to keep the funding whole, it's been voted down. So I'm glad to hear that we're finally wanting to talk about how to keep their funding solid. I'm open to any suggestions because I've run out of ideas from my part. I, I think the reason that this feels a little rushed is because we've put the CVB in a very bad bind. They need to know what funding's coming and where it's coming from and what's going on so that they can go out and market. You know, we've, we've talked about this now for, I don't even know how many months before county management got the letter the first time and we've been back and forth on whether or not, you know, what options to present to the board and what the options were and, you know, options one, two, and three, doing nothing, give, you know, letting them go to Rock Hill, whatever it may be. And so we've, we've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it now for, I know, at least three months. And the CVB still has no idea what we want to do as a council. So I'm hearing rumors and thoughts up here now of deferring again and talking some more and doing some more. That doesn't help the CVB. I think, in my opinion, that hurts the CVB worse than us making a decision up here tonight and moving forward with that decision. That's what we're elected to do. That's why the people voted for us, was to make the tough decisions. And, you know, you, you can analyze something to death sometimes trying to get every detail of everything that's out there. But the, in my opinion, the, part of the, the measure of a good leader is to be able to make a decision when they've got details in front of them to make a decision on. You know, I'm, I've always wanted this to be under the county's umbrella. I think Visit York County makes better sense than whatever spending more marketing money on comes up with for it to be under Rock Hill PRT. I'm not thrilled with the fact that there is some money in the Visit York County coffers that I don't think the best use of that is to pay for another branding service or marketing agency to figure out another brand for them when we've spent, they've spent all this money getting branded in the first place. I surely don't think the best use of that money is to buy out a seven-year lease. You know, I don't know what else to say because I've sat up here for four and a half years and said this. I, I'm trying, I don't like people that say I told you so, so I'm trying not to come out and say it, but it sounds a lot like it, I know. But, you know, I'm open for, for suggestions on where we can get some funding. And I'm happy to, to vote on that as part of the motion tonight. But I'm out of ideas because I've tried every idea I can come up with for funding and it's all been voted down.
Any other discussion?
I want to make a comment there. I, I think that the, the idea of us just paying seven years of a lease, I think that further complicates some of what we have to decide. Because I'm sure that lease is going to run, what's the monthly lease on that building? I mean, it's going to be a huge fee just to buy that lease out. Seven thousand dollars a month for the next seven years to buy it out.
Well, I would want to hear from, from Michael on that because there's a good chance we wouldn't be on the hook for it for seven years. There's possibly either a buyout position, they would certainly have a duty to mitigate their damages, find another tenant for it.
But I would like to have everything in front of us so that we know what that buyout is and what some of the other existing options that we could have. But that certainly will come into play. And I would hate to, to, to say let's do it and then find out, oh, well, we got to pay a grand sum total just for the lease part. And considering what we've put into branding this thing, I just don't think right now, tonight, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting either way, to leave or to stay. You know, it, it, we have some issues still that we would need to work out before we make the best decision. And obviously, he has an operating budget that goes through June of next year. Right now, we may not be able to plan for events, but at least we know he can still make payroll, he can still work his staff and do stuff. But right now, I don't know what's the best decision based on what we've heard tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Other council members? Oh, sorry, I was looking at Ms. Love.
So, yeah, Robert, you certainly have been the.
Mike.
You've certainly been the biggest advocate for the CVB and I've probably been your nemesis. But, you know, I think what they do is great. I think it is mostly centered around the City of Rock Hill. So as a council person who is from the outlying areas of the county, I, I see the passion in Joel and, and I see the passion from the Rock Hill folks always. But you have to remember that there, those of us who are looking at this from a different viewpoint. I'm not willing to talk about funding for the CVB tonight because we've, we've opened that can of worms a couple of times and we're, we're about to open it again if we're not careful. But, you know, I just, I want to say a couple of things that I feel like I just want to get off my chest. One is that, you know, when we bring up this, this lease of this building, I just felt like at the time that that was done, you know, mentally, I had to step back away from that budget because it concerned me, that, that cost concerned me. And I do feel like that as you, you're, you've been cut some by the county outside of the COVID situation, but you have been cut some a lot by the county. You know, at the same time, your ATAX is increasing and it's going to continue to increase. And so I see a kind of a graph that's kind of like this now, but it's actually probably going to be like this before long between basis with the county's giving you, what we were giving you in hospitality dollars versus what you're going to ultimately get in, in your ATAX. And, you know, if, if, if the municipalities want to, want to have a seat at the table, that, I don't have a problem with that. If they want to give you, I mean, six thousand dollars from Clover will buy Clover a seat at the table, then more power to them. But I just, you know, if six thousand dollars is a, is a, is a big number, then, then, I mean, what kind of numbers are we really talking about in, in general? But I just, I feel like that this has just been an ongoing thing for, 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 for years. And, and I'm not sold on the budget every year. And that's why I look at this and I go, you know, I don't know what you're paying your employees, but I think it's a lot. And, and I look at that budget and I look, it, to me, it's not a tight ship. And it hasn't been. So I would love to know that that board who's standing up here tonight, a couple of you talking tonight, that y'all are looking at that, at that budget and bringing us the tightest budget you can possibly bring us. And, and, and when I, and when you tell me that so many people are visiting downtown Clover, I can believe that at that point. But I, I don't believe, I don't believe all of those numbers. I think they're made up things. I think they're, they're pie in the sky numbers sometimes. And, and, and that, that just, that bothers me because I'm a fact-oriented person. I want to look at the numbers. I want to be, I want to look at it and go, gosh, you know what? They, they didn't go out and get the, the, the best building they could get and they're paying seven thousand dollars a month for it. That's a lot of rent. And, and so those are the things that bother me in general about the CVB. And, and so I, I'm going to vote tonight with Robert on keeping this under the county. And I'll sit through one more budget season next year and try and figure out if we did the right thing or if we need to let them go to the City of Rock Hill at that point. Tonight's not a funding, it's not about the three hundred thousand dollars. In my mind, it's not about that at all tonight. So we'll, we'll, we'll come back around to that next year. And I've said this before too, but where there's a will, there is a way. And, and Billy and that board have, they have found a way. And that's what makes me feel better about that budget is that when I can cut that budget and know that they're going to, they're going to accomplish their mission in spite of that, then that's, that, that's what makes me not continue to cut your budget. But that's what makes me look at what they're doing and, and, and give, and have more confidence when, when it comes up again.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so appreciate the feedback y'all gave us tonight. Thank you. You know, based on our decision before, you know, based on how we approach things, you know, from, from an opportunity standpoint when it comes to our capital expenditures, I think that, you know, Billy and team has done a fantastic job with the impact fee and to be able to grow that money to, to create, you know, the offset of, of losing a lot of that H tax. I think at the end of the day though, when you look at, from a county perspective, I think ATAX is, is, is a perfect revenue stream to go towards tourism. I think that's very much so where it should go. And in, in putting all that towards there, I think that's the right direction. I do have a concern, and, and I've had a concern right from the beginning, is with the H tax. I think H tax should be applied towards items such as capital expenditures for the county, H tax towards tourism. Again, I think that we are at a point here with this discussion where I, I want to keep this under the county. I do, I do want to keep it. You know, my approach would only be to support it from an ATAX perspective. I think that, that for me, for the county, I think that's, to me, is the direction the revenue should be, should be pointed in. So that would be my thoughts.
Can I? Will you yield? Ms. Love? You need to turn your mic on.
We have hired Greg Suskin, and I feel like he is going to fill, fill some of the void. And also, this, this next year will kind of give us the opportunity to see what promotions and what marketing and what things York County is, as, as a whole, is able to accomplish outside of the CVB. And I think that's a very important aspect of where our money goes. Before we give more money to the CVB, I think we have to realize, you know, we've, we've got parks and recreation and a lot of things in the county that I believe we're going to market outside of the CVB. And, and, and I want to see that. I want to see what that looks like over the next year also.
Mr. Guffey?
First off, as a business owner, I can imagine going from 1.2 million and having your budget cut every single year and having to ask for permission every single year. If we're not going to talk funding today, then I don't see any reason to hold Visit York County within the county. I, I, I just don't understand how we can continue to plan. I was one of the ones that did not want to pull the funding to begin with. But the money was pulled. To me, I seen the return on investment. I'm just not hearing, I guess, consensus from council that we're going to be able to give that funding. And so what are we going to do? We're going to vote to keep them here with the county and then send them back without any funds to continue essentially exactly the same problem that they've had for how many months now? And it just doesn't make sense to me.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hamilton?
I'll just say how we've kind of gone around.
Most of them, there's some order into this, but it's been a long night already. Listen, I, like Brandon and, and like Councilman Winkler, I did not vote to cut the, the CVB's budget to zero because like Councilman Roddy said, I'm proud of what the CVB is and what they've done and the dollars that we've invested in the CVB. But in my mind, this council already made that decision when we voted to cut the funding to zero. We already told the community what we thought of the CVB when we decided to cut their funding to zero. And now, like Councilman Guffey said, we're talking about holding the CVB hostage without discussing adequate funding and without talking about what, what they need to do their job. We've asked them what they need to do their job. They've told us and we continue to say, oh, well, here's twenty thousand dollars. I guess that'll help for now. And just hold on to it in the meantime and good luck and, you know, we wish you well. And to me, that's, it's shameful. It's shameful and embarrassing that this council has, we've put ourselves in this position. It's shameful that we've put the people who are in charge of marketing this great county in this position. The director of that organization tells us what's best for that organization to continue to do its job and to market the county effectively. Our staff has told us what's best for the county, for that organization to continue to, to market the county effectively. And, you know, as part of this big discussion, we were told a lot of reasons that we needed to keep the CVB with the county. And one by one, as I've asked questions, every single one of those reasons have just turned out to be incorrect. We've asked the CVB, will you be able to continue to market events in the unincorporated areas? I was told they wouldn't be able to. Well, it turns out that absolutely that's true that they can. We've asked about PIBA. And if we went outside of, or if they left the county, that they would lose their ability to remain in the state's benefits program. Turns out that's not true. I could go on and on. I mean, this has already been a long time. But my point is, every reason that we've been given for the CVB to remain in the county has turned out to either be just completely wrong or the opposite is also true. So it turns out they can leave and continue to do their job. So to say we're definitively going to go in one direction, like Councilman Winkler said, and we need to make a decision, well, if we're going to make a decision, let's make a decision. Let's agree to fund them effectively and not just keep them held hostage on a leash without being able to do their jobs effectively. So unless there's some will of this council to commit to provide effective funding for this organization, for this organization that does such a good job marketing our great county, I don't see how we can just continue to hold them hostage.
So I'll wrap up my comments. I will support Mr. Winkler's motion. And the reason why is because it seems like there's a lot of talking, but there's not a lot of real listening. And I, I don't think it's ever too late to get the right answer. I take issue with some of the funding issues, but interestingly enough, some of the folks who are concerned about not talking about that, that issue took that out of the motion. Here's my biggest concern. The two reasons that I understand that the board took the issue and they were split when they did it. One of the main ones was based on something that's not accurate, the benefits. There is no issue with the benefits. We can stay under the county arm and we can address that and deal with that. The second question that I understood caused some pause was the, the funding. Well, I think at this point, what's not clear is what is necessary and what is needed based upon where the money is now. I mean, I'm getting information that's different, that there's a surplus running this year that, you know, to get to the one and a half million is not, need to come from the county. That, that is what was kind of communicated from the board. So I think there still is some miscommunication about what is necessary to move forward and how do we keep it under the county helm? I do believe that it's the best interest of the county citizens for this to remain under our county board. I'm committed to looking into the issue. I would prefer that we defer the issue of the ATAX, which is the issue after this, to give us an opportunity to take a look at that, open the books. Let's figure out what is, what is actually, actually necessary. I mean, I'm willing to do the legwork on that myself, but I think we have built a lot into retaining the York County, Visit York County logo and the goodwill that's associated with that. I think we need to keep that. I, I think it is a huge mistake and irresponsible use of, of funds to use the reserve, which I understand there's a healthy reserve of approximately a million dollars to go towards paying anything towards a lease and buying out a lease early. I, I just don't think that's the best approach to, to looking at that. And, and also think that there is, there's, there are questions that we're, we're basing that, basing decisions on without having that in here. So I think it's, it's important to take the step for council to, to decide whether or not they want it to stay under the county. So I think it's important to take the step for council to decide whether or not they want it to stay under the county or not. That's the first issue. That's the motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying no?
No, no.
Motion passes four to two.
Five to.
Five to two. Thank you. My mask off. New business number two. Council to consider the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2022 funding in the total amount of $42,250.
I guess there's, move to approve.
Motion in the second. Mr. Roddy?
And the reason why I say that, I guess if we're going to keep them under, what was that?
Clarification, what are we approving? Were we approving the recommendation of the committee or were we approving, giving the CVB the extra $20,000?
Right here it says 42,250.
That's the recommendation of the committee. So that's for all these different organizations to get their portion then and not the CVB.
Out of the 42. Whatever this middle accommodations committee recommended. So we're splitting up the 42,250.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure if we were making the motion to split it up between these organizations or if we were making the motion to give it all to the CVB. So that's why I was trying to just clarify.
The way it's broken down here, that each one of these organizations are getting a piece of this 42,250. Is that how it's written? Yeah, so, and I wanted to touch real quick that, you know, we talk about, I want to get this point in on the last item. We talk about how much money is needed for the CVB. I was just blown away to hear how that lease is seven grand a month. That's $84,000 a year. If we do the math on that over a 10-year period, that's a huge sum of money. I wish we would have been on the front end of this lease because we could have gotten, if we cut expenses, we don't have to put as much money somewhere. And I was just blown away to hear that that lease was seven grand plus a month. That's a huge chunk of what's needed to operate. If we do the math, that's 84 grand a year on a lease just to be downtown for a marketing service where marketing is on the computer, marketing's on the phone, marketing can be done in the basement of a house or garage. So when we're talking about expenses and what it costs to run a service, that was a huge chunk of what, a huge chunk of this budget that we were committing every year. If we were giving 300,000, well, 84 went out the window with a lease. And if I understand correctly, and it's been a couple of years ago, we did pay something down to get that lease cost down to seven grand. So the lease is actually more, am I correct? I see Billy shaking his head. I see some. So if my memory serves me correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff can do the legwork. If the lease now is seven grand, I do remember something being in the discussion when the CVB was looking to move downtown of some kind of revenue being used to pay down that portion so that we got a seven grand lease. But I'm always of the idea of, we need to start looking at some of our expenses when we're looking at what it takes to run a service, run a business, run an outfit because that's a huge chunk of what we're spending taxpayers' money on, $84,000 a year to house ourselves downtown. So I really hope that we can get a handle. And there's nothing we can do about the lease now, but I just wanted to point that out as part of the last discussion item, that we need to start looking at expenses when we're making these recommendations and where this money is going because that's a serious chunk of change, 84 grand a year on a lease, not including utilities and other expenses that go along with running the CVB.
Ms. Love?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. You know, when we get this and we look at this, we really don't know any information. So we don't know how we, like, you know, for example, the Martin Luther King.
You need to turn your microphone on, sorry. Did I interrupt that thought? Sorry. I'm just going to leave it on. How about that?
Okay. So we don't really know how this committee came to the recommendations. I know last year for Martin Luther King Day Parade, we increased that. And Margaret, you probably remember what that was, but we gave an increase there. And then, so the requested amount is higher. I don't remember what they got last year, but I'm just wondering, is that a growing?
It's on the far right-hand column what we gave them last year.
So we're doubling, so we increased what we gave them last year, and now this year we're going to double that amount. I'm just wondering, and that one, and then my question.
Which column? We're going, it's going to 1500.
Well, I thought we were doing the requested amount. Oh, the recommended. I'm sorry.
Requested amount is what all the organizations requested all added together, right? Just what they request, not what was recommended.
So we're looking at the committee recommended column?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess my question is, why are we reducing that number again? I'm reversing my question. Why are we reducing that number again? And then, you know, the Old English District. I'm just having to catch up now. I'm having to reverse my thoughts on this. Does the Old English District promote things in York County? I mean, is that Chester? Or is that York County? What did, I mean, it seems like they overlap a little with the CVB. And I just don't know what the purpose of that money is. But my other question is, is this, Robert, were you making the motion that all of this money would go toward the CVB? I'm confused by your motion.
Yeah, because we've all been saying we wanted to fund the CVB more. So my motion was to take everything that's unallocated, which this hasn't been allocated yet, and give it to the CVB.
So these groups would be zeros.
Other than the CVB, we'd get the total 42.
I don't know how, I mean, that would be, I mean, you think they're upset about losing 300,000. What about the groups that where $1,500 matters to them? I think that's a, you know, when you look at the scale of dollars, this money matters more to these smaller groups than a big amount does to a bigger group who has other ways of getting funding. And so that really concerned me for a couple of these. I mean, Brattonsville Cultural Heritage Museum, that is York County. And the Arts Council is, I mean, I mean, these are things that, I think this list is very important. So maybe the motion needs to be changed to do, I just, I mean, I'd like to know from everybody what they think because I think.
Sorry, David.
Just the recommendation.
Can I ask, what, is it Robert's motion or Bump's motion that's actually on the table? Has there been a second?
Bump's motion was seconded by Ms. Love.
Because there seems to be a lot of discussion. Was it by Ms. Love? Okay. I didn't hear a second.
She was, she made the second.
Yeah, I don't have a motion on the table at this point because.
And the motion again is to approve the Accommodations Committee recommended. So basically, that middle column right there is what the motion is on.
Because that's all the money that's in there, right?
But didn't Robert's motion pull all that funding to begin with?
That motion's dead.
We removed funding from that first motion because everybody wanted that separate. So my motion was just to keep Visit York County under the county umbrella.
So, you know, based on the discussion we've had earlier, you know, again, opportunity for additional ATACS. I'm behind that, absolutely. My concern though is looking at this is that when this money is already allocated to some of the groups as Allison, whoops, as Allison was mentioning, you know, those smaller groups are, the small amounts, but they're critical, would be a critical impact to these orgs. So, you know, having said that, I think that, you know, if we look and we identify ATACS that currently is available that is not tied to small organizations, yes, I'd be behind that. I'm not comfortable with impacting these organizations. Even though these are small amounts, again, these are critical for some of these organizations. So that's where I stand.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll just say, I'm a little confused this evening, I guess, because we talk about trying to come up with more ATACS money to give to the CVB. And this discussion we're having right now is why the CVB is pulling their hair out and don't know what to do because we were talking about giving them everything that's unallocated right now, which I don't like saying, no, these smaller organizations won't get anything. But what I've been hearing from council for the last two or three weeks is we want to figure out how to fund the CVB more. There is no other ATACS in the bucket. According to what our budget is right now and what we're, county financial advisor and the county management has said we will collect, we're allocating everything that's in ATACS. There is nothing else. If we do this tonight, we've allocated our ATACS fund. So my vote was to, unfortunately, to cut out these smaller organizations to try to give as much as we could to the CVB, which is what people have been saying they wanted to do. Again, I'm open for funding from other places if somebody can figure out something. But I won't be voting for the committee's recommendation because what I heard earlier and what I've been saying all along is we got to get more funding for the CVB somehow. And so I will not vote for the recommendations tonight.
Mr. Roddy?
I'm at one more point, and I think it's kind of already been touched on. How do we tell these smaller organizations, we're not going to give you anything, which means this little bit of money means a lot to these smaller budgets than 42,250 would mean in the grand scheme of the CVB looking for 300,000. I think we're, we'll be doing a disservice to the little guy who has no options to generate any kind of revenue to put their events on because the Arts Council, Culture and Heritage, Old English, NAACP Parade, Fort Mill, History Museum, those also bring things to York County. So how can we tell them, we're just going to give the funding, complete funding, the additional money to the CVB and which will be a drop in the bucket to them. But this 42,250 divided amongst all of them would be significant to every last one of those other organizations who have probably no other resource to go out and secure any kind of additional help. And I think we've said it years ago when we started talking about, you know, supporting certain things. We want other groups in York County to grow and hopefully not have to use this kind of money. But until they get to the point of being able to stand on their own because $1,500 assistance or $2,000 assistance to anybody on this list is probably going to be huge versus this small pot of money going into a big budget, which is not going to change, 42,250 is not even going to pay one person's salary at the CVB. It's not going to be anything in the grand scheme of things. But the smaller pots of money going to these smaller organizations probably is going to mean a make or break for a lot of them, whether they can put the event on in a magnitude that they would like to. Because I can assure you, if we script these six organizations or seven organizations, at this point be six, of this little bit of funding, it's going to probably really set them back to the point they may or may not be able to perform at the level that they've been, you know, bringing visitors. Because all these organizations, I'm sure, bring visitors to York County to some degree. And so I would just hate to cut out all the little guys just to give the small pot of money to CVB. If it would fix, if 42,250 would fix the CVB's problem, I think it'd be a go. But 42,250 is not going to fix what we've had to deal with and what they're facing going forward with a funding mechanism. I hate to say it. You know, Billy needs 42,250 times two, three, four, five to make his budget situation work. So why continue to throw little Band-Aids at that until we collectively find a way to make it work for him to stay in-house? This is, the 20,000 would be a slap in the face. 40,000 is still a slap in the face in the grand scheme of things. And so we have work to do to figure this thing out, and it probably won't get figured out tonight. But for those of us who will still be here, we still have an opportunity to make it work going forward.
I want to say, you know, the reason I didn't vote to keep the CVB to begin with is simply because, just as you just said, 42,000 is a drop in the bucket. They go from 1.2 million down to 77,000, I think is what they're received. It's mind boggling to have less than 10% of their budget. And we're talking about leases being $7,000 a month. We're paying less than 10% of that. So it's not that we're spending $49,000 a year on their lease. We're not the largest contributor. And yet, we're still trying to control them. And for us to continue moving forward with these funds, I mean, just from looking at the numbers, there's not enough money there. So it just seems like we're going around in circles and there's not a solution unless there's another way for just ATACS to come in.
Any other discussion?
Turn the mic on this time. Thank you. So just to bring a couple of you up to date who weren't on this council, when we did reduce their funding from a million two, at the time we did that, the city of Rock Hill was giving them a whopping $80,000. And so what we have done is we have reversed this. So now, the county who gets much less than the city gets is given approximately that amount. And the city should make up some of that difference. So, you know, I was torn tonight on whether we should, which way to go. And I'm still torn. I'll be torn until we get around to budget season next year. And then I'll make a solid recommendation on which I think is, what I think is the best thing for the people of my area that doesn't get a lot and then the people countywide. But, you know, it sounds great. It's a great pitch for somebody to stand up and say, you know, you were giving us a million two and now you're only giving us 77. But if you weren't here for those conversations and you don't live in the unincorporated areas that are out around the fringe of York County, then it might not make as much sense to you. And if you don't know the number, the opposing number that was $80,000 at that time, then I'm sure it sounds a lot, a lot, I mean, it sounds like we really, you know, they took a big hit. But they are in Rock Hill and the city of Rock Hill should make up any difference because that ultimately is what they're advertising. That's who they are advertising for. That's who has the facilities. That's where the people are coming. That's who has the hotels. That's where their funding comes from. And that funding will only go up because it's based on those hotels. And we're only adding hotels and more stays. And, I mean, he said that. So I just, you know, I don't think tonight should be a pity party for the CVB. I think the pity party is for the people who are on this list right here, the poor NAACP who's being cut from $5,000 to 1,500, the largest parade anywhere in the state of South Carolina for a, you know what, for a dedicated audience in York County. And we're going to cut them to 1,500 not blinking eye? I mean, the Old English District is not even in York County. And we're going to fund them? I mean, we need to look at that. I think we need to look at that a little harder next year too. But my point when I first started talking the first time on this was, you know, it would be nice to have, you know, I know I'm famous for asking for little charts and things, but I don't know how, I'm just taking somebody, I'm just taking a committee's recommendation here. But I can look at this and in conjunction with what some of the council members have recommended tonight and say that this list needs to be, this needs to be tightened up too. Because we've got things all over the place and we need to figure out, you know, what's important and what's not. And the CVB doesn't cover all of this. They can't replace all of this. So it's just, this is frustrating. This conversation has gone on since I got on council four and a half years ago. It's been ongoing. And it's frustrating because, you know, we do want to help the CVB, but I'm going to tell you that this council person hasn't sat here and said, hey, let's figure out how to fund the CVB at any cost. I've not said that over the last few weeks. So maybe some have and we probably know which ones, but you know what? You're from Rock Hill, so that's what we would expect you to say. But this, the NAACP parade, and I'm just using that as an example, that's a huge thing to the city of York. And they need to be able to advertise that to their, out, to the branches that they can reach. The CVB can't replace what they can do for that. And that's just, that's just one of the examples on here. So I'm done. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something else. You're 100% right. As you were talking about, the funds have switched with Rock Hill being such a small amount and now they're such a large amount. That's why I'm so confused as to why we think it is best for us to control the board whenever Rock Hill is the primary funding. That's what is mind boggling too. If we're less than 10% of the budget, why are we trying to dictate what they do? We can use them as our DMF and continue moving forward.
That could change next year.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. It's been a long night, so maybe that's why I'm having a hard time following the logic. But like Brandon, I'm just, I'm trying, but I've remained confused. So far, we're basically saying, we'd love the CVB, we're proud of them, we want them to continue to do their job. We really want them to market unincorporated areas and be here for the entire county. And we don't want them to only be concerned about the city of Rock Hill. And we want them to market the unincorporated areas, but we're not going to fund you to do it. And as a matter of fact, this other funding that we think would be a good idea to be allocated to, actually, we're not going to do that. We're going to go ahead and continue to split that up amongst everyone else because we don't have the will to come up with 300,000, so we're just going to say we're not going to come up with anything. The logic is so scattered and all over the place. And it might just be me. Maybe I'm just confused. But I'm just having a really hard time following it. Obviously, even if we do, and I- Obviously, even if we do, and I'm, I can kind of tell maybe by some of the discussion, even if we do allocate forty-two thousand to the CBB, it is a drop in the proverbial bucket, as Councilman Roddy said, and does nothing to solve the actual problem, which is, we have cut your funding to zero and expect you to continue to represent and do your job for the entire county, when the city of Rock Hill has made up the difference, and your own impact fee on the hotels has made up the difference. And where are those hotels located? In Rock Hill. So here we are, once again, saying we're not gonna give you any money, but continue to do everything you can for the unincorporated areas and for the county, and even though, you know, we want Rock Hill to fund it, but we're not gonna give you any money, but keep doing everything for the unincorporated areas in the county. I'm struggling to figure out how that makes sense.
Are you certain this needs to be made?
I believe whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Any other discussion from folks who have not spoken?
I can't remember if I spoke on this. I'll just say, I agree with what, you know, council member's saying, because it's, again, I think I did say, we sat up here and said we wanted to find other ways to fund them, and now we're not even gonna fund them with what we've got here that we were talking about, so that, again, I won't support the motion, so.
Okay. I will say, I still think we're operating under limited information. I'm committing to you, I will be in your office, Mr. Dunlap, for my own personal edification. I would like for you to open your books, both sides, let me take a look at it, let me see your expenses. I would like to see what that looks like for myself. Absolutely, everyone else is certainly willing to do that. I want to do, I want the books open so that we can take a look at it. I think that one of the things that I'm concerned about with the ATACS, and the reason why I won't support this motion tonight, is because I think it's premature. I should, trusting my gut, it shouldn't have been on the agenda. I asked for it not to be on there until we had clear indication from legal, and that was a mistake, because I think it caused some discussion here that could have been avoided. I think there's also some questions here about what technically really is available under ATACS, and how much of that is committed, where that goes, the total amount is, from what I understand, one hundred and seventy-five from the state, from local, and ninety from the state. I think we need to, if we're gonna take a look at these things, I think we need to look at it eyes wide open, and so I will not, I will not be supporting the motion on this, simply because I think we need to defer it and make sure that we have all the information available. It has no reflection on whether or not I support or do not support these Accommodations Committee recommended projects. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
So raise your hand if you're the ayes. And the noes. Okay, motion fails. Thank you, Mr. Roddy, for me tonight. Let's move forward. Counsel to approve the enhancement of services for York County's eight-hundred megahertz radio network system by Motorola Solutions Incorporated of Columbia, South Carolina, for a total cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. Did I get that right, megahertz?
No, thank you.
I'm proud of myself for that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Counsel to consider the request of Bethel Rural Fire Tax District to ratify the expenditure for Bethel Service to repair from Rush International Truck Centers, Charlotte, North Carolina, for a total cost of nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, and authorize the transfer of funds for reimbursement from the tax district account. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Winkler?
Sorry, I was, my understanding of this is Bethel had a repair that needed to be done, and went and did the repair outside of our procurement policy. They paid for it out of their special tax district, and now they're asking us to reimburse their special tax district and ratify that's, or is that a separate, because that's the way it was on, if we ratify it, then we're saying we're okay with that being done outside the tax district, or outside of our procurement.
You're approving the process that was outside the code, and I guess part of that is acknowledging the need of the repair. The money, as I understand it, came from an account that is not the tax district account, otherwise the repair would have been borne by that account. So the request for reimbursement, as I understand the facts, are to authorize the transfer from the tax district account where the expenditure originally would have emanated from into the fund that it came, that the monies were pulled from.
But by ratifying the account technically, legally, or ratifying this transfer of this expenditure, are we saying, are we basically saying it's okay to go outside the procurement and do this on your own, and we'll look the other way?
No, I mean, you shouldn't be saying that, but in this instance, you're acknowledging that repairs have been made and paid for, and that those repairs were outside the scope of our procedures and the normal course of conduct, whether this is a repetitive process or one out of necessity, and one that happens every so often is a question I don't have the facts for, but you are approving, you're acknowledging the expenditure and approving it at under ten thousand dollars and okay to be reimbursed. I certainly don't think it is by any means a consent to the process is one that they should pursue in the future.
I can expound on that just a little. So we have a new chief, we have a truck that we felt like was a safety issue, and they took that truck to have it checked out, they took it back to the dealership to have the truck checked out, and it was originally a, I think it was a twenty-five hundred dollar cost to fix what was wrong, which would have been okay, and they told them to go ahead. And the second part of this is that after they fixed that, they took the truck on a road test, and they determined that it also needed a, Morris can help me better with this, but a CV, CV joint and something underneath, the truck was very, just, they weren't using the truck, because it's a truck they just purchased a year and a half ago as a used vehicle, but they found out that it needed more repairs, it failed the road test. So while they had it, and because it was at the dealership, they told them, just go ahead and, go ahead and fix whatever needs to be fixed. And now they are able to use the truck, the truck is in much better shape, but he was a brand-new chief as of January, this took place back a few months after that, and he now knows that he is not to do it, and this is not the protocol on how you get things done. It ultimately would have had to go back to that dealership for those repairs, most likely, either way, so it was a cost that would have been, it just, it didn't, it got paid before it went through, they would have had to get it, take it back, get the funding from the board, so the chief is fully aware of what the proper procedures are at this point.
And that brings up, that's, it's not a repair that we could have done in-house, then?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, six to one. Motion passes. Counsel to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and provide for other fiscal matters relating thereto.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and to provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any committee reports, any council member, non-agenda comments.
Yeah, actually, I do, I do have one. So I'm getting a lot of emails, et cetera, in, from my constituents in regards to what we're seeing as, which I deem to be federal intrusion. And that's based on there is a concern about the IRS monitoring counts of people at over six hundred dollars. Now, there was word that there was a vote on that, we're not sure if that was going to happen from a federal government perspective, and I know that one state has already stepped forward to block any type of monitoring, but I would request the staff that we could look into this, if this is something that would actually be pushed out from federal government, that we take the appropriate actions, whether working with the state to protect the people of York County from this.
I just want to remind everybody that there is a mayor's race in Rock Hill tomorrow, and my good friend Von Parity is on that ballot, so wish you all the best tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, dear friend.
I just want to keep you here, too, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Roddy?
Surprised that I don't have anything to say. I'm trying to get out of here.
Anyone else? All right.
This isn't technically a non-agenda comment, but I can't hold my mouth. The point was made about Billy opening up his books, I just want to be clear for everyone, those have been opened, any one of us has the opportunity to review his budget at any time.
Mr. Hamilton.
In fact, I have.
I think that is out of order.
Well, we've been all over the place tonight, so I think I'm not the only one who's been out of order at least once, but that is my one point that I felt needed to be made on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. Move that we go into executive session regarding a contractual matter relating to Thistle One and Two, also for the receipt of legal advice regarding a new indie regulatory matter, and for additional legal advice regarding the consideration of a mediated settlement agreement regarding the ZBA appeal.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session in this room? In this room. We are out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do, we have two motions. The first motion is to authorize the execution of an offer of purchase of Thistle Two as discussed in executive session.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to approve a mediated settlement agreement relating to ZBA appeal two nineteen dash four five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.